Yep. All right. Well, good evening, everybody. We're gonna get started. This is a meeting, this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Educators for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. All right, we'll call to order. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, can you do roll call, please?
Mr. Klaus.
Here.
Mr. Schleicher.
Here.
Mr. Huber.
Here.
Mrs. Summer.
Here.
And Mr. Hilsman.
Here. Okay, before we set the agenda, we have one adjustment on Attachment 1. It's the change of the Assistant Marching Band Supplemental Contract for Sidney Rindler. We're taking her steps from zero to step two because of years of experience that wasn't on there initially, so when we did add that experience, so. Any questions on that? And Brooke, Michelle, any other changes before we set the agenda?
No.
Nope.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Carl, and a second.
I'll second.
Julie?
Mr. Klaus.
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Aye.
Mrs. Summer.
Aye.
And Mr. Hilsman.
Aye.
Okay. Sherry and Tressie, I don't see either one of them there, so, and Joni, I don't see her either, so Andrea, how are ya?
Hello, good evening. My name is Andrea Nickel and I am an intervention specialist at the high school. I am sorry that I could not join you last month, but I am happy to be here tonight to talk to you about our LabRats. And I'm gonna stay on script because otherwise I will talk forever because we are so passionate about this group and we cannot wait to share with you some of the fun things that we have going on. This is a group that Alicia Ball and myself have founded together. We co-teach ninth grade English now, this is several years going in, and we also have a period that we teach together of English Lab. And this is a period that allows us some extra time for reteaching and pre-teaching, really any additional help and support that they need in English. But what we really found out about two years ago is that a lot of the students who needed that additional academic support also needed a lot more, a lot more love and support than we could give them than just in the classroom. A lot of them didn't have that adult support outside of school. We found that a lot of them didn't really have much else that was keeping them invested in school, and a lot of them shared that they just didn't see the purpose in coming to school. It was through these students that LabRat was born. We wanted to provide a safe space for these students who felt like they didn't have one in a school setting. Our students chose the name LabRats, they chose to be called that because LAB stands for Lead, Advocate, and Bill, not just English Lab that they're in. They wanted to be leaders in our school community, and it's really not often that they get that experience, that they get to be in that position. And so they wanted the opportunity to help and support the newcomers, the freshmen in English Lab in that position as well. We do meet every Friday during lunch, and it is incredibly informal. We like to just kinda get together and again provide that space for them to just eat, which is not something they're super accustomed to in school. We did find that if you serve any type of food, we will absolutely have a higher number of students join us that day, so that's simply what we try to do. After we developed LabRats, the first thing that we did kind of as an outside activity was we took them to a Broadway show. We were reading the novel To Kill a Mockingbird, and we found that it was playing at Cluse Hall in Indianapolis, and so we took a trip. We took them to Indianapolis to Broadway, and we took them to Olive Garden, and it was the most special experience because a lot of them had never been to a big city setting like that. And a lot of them had never been to a place where you sit down and eat dinner, right, outside of their home. So it was really cool that we got to do that with them, and it was through this that Alicia started dreaming. And if you know Alicia Ball, you know that once she starts dreaming and putting her mind to something, that it can be a really awesome and dangerous thing. And so she put this dream into motion, and we are advocating for a trip to New York City. And we are super fortunate and thrilled at that, thanks to many generous donations and support from our amazing administration. And we are also partnering with Grand Lake United Methodist Church. Our dream is a reality, and we are going to be taking 20 of our LabRats to New York City, which is so exciting. And the purpose of this trip is twofold. We are going to be completing a service learning project in which we'll be serving at a New York City soup kitchen, because a lot of our students have shared this desire to give back, because honestly, they're usually the ones on the receiving end of these services. And we want to show them that being the change, which we say on the announcements every single day, being the change just isn't reserved for that upper echelon of the high academics or the athletes or anybody like that. Anybody can be the change, no matter your background or your history or even your pessimistic that you've made. And then, of course, we also are going to take our LabRats to see all the amazing sights of New York City. We are gonna go to Central Park and the 9/11 Museum, and we are also going to take them to another Broadway show, but this one is going to be of The Outsiders, which is a book that they read in eighth grade, and they came in and just could not stop talking about it. So the fact that we can go see it on a Broadway stage is so exciting. So we are just so thrilled that we can do this experience with them. We hope that it will allow our students to see that no matter your background, your age, your past experiences, there is the chance to do more and to see more and then to be more. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Andrea. Phil, any facilities update?
Um, on the elementary building, they've got a fence that they were putting up around the mechanical yard, that's been completed. They finished cameras, it's exterior cameras that they had to get connected and hooked up, that's done, parking lot area. And that's the tornado doors, they've had some issues. The locking mechanism wasn't installed correctly, so they've got a repair for that, and that's scheduled for October 6th, when there's no students in the building that day. We have the brick fixes and caulking, they're working on that schedule on the existing CIS building, so they're working to get that and get that contractor in here to begin yet, hopefully in the next few weeks. Pretty much it, short list for the elementary. I mean, it's up and running and doing well, so, it's doing great over there. On the high school, all the roof support, roof steel is all, that's all been set, which is allowing them to go in and finish. So all the roof areas are being completed at this time. On the second floor, they've got all the studs done, they're doing the drywall, the above ceiling drywall's going in, that's getting finished. They're working on all the first floor studs across the bottom, and then they'll chase that with the upper level of drywall as well. All the brick is done on most areas, they're doing some on, I guess, on the west side of the three-story, actually, the back areas of that is being completed, and everything else in there is finished. There's metal panels, if you look at the third floor, on the west and the east sides up above, you'll see there's a metal panel, they're working on it, I won't say it's complete yet. Second, third floors are roofing in, the plumbing, mechanical, electric, and technology, all that's being worked on simultaneously. The windows, really neat windows on the north side of the gym, that's pretty spectacular. You can go in there, here from the outside or from the inside, just to see what all that's gonna look like above the student section on that end of the gym, and they are working on the side lights, some windows on both sides of the competition gym as well. Working on sprinkler systems on the third floor and interior basenary walls, so dividing up the stage space in the student dining area, so there's storage rooms going in, there's the cavities where the wall, the operable wall will reside, so all those are being installed right now, that's going in. And then the big news, tomorrow and Wednesday is Furniture Fair. So middle school and high school staff, you're welcome. I'm out here in the multipurpose room of the CAP building, we have two deliveries today of some furniture options. So there'll be two representatives from Garvin Miller here tomorrow and Wednesday, majority of the day, so if you'd like to stop out, reminders for staff, they're aware of it. The CAP building would be a nice medium for the middle school to come over and high school run out, so I don't got time either before, during, or after school. Yep, moving on.
Any questions for Phil?
Those windows on the north side of the gym, those are, it's translucent windows, sort of, right?
Yeah, they're dark.
Okay. I seen them from the soccer field, I figured that's what they were, I just wasn't sure exactly.
All right, thanks, Phil. Anybody signed up?
Teresa.
Teresa.
First of all, the state funding that I asked about, that we're losing for the fiscal year '25, '26, and '26, '27, have we had a chance to look at those estimates and come up, are they correct figure?
I can't give you that, I didn't expect that here. But basically, we're down a million dollars this year so far for state funding, but again, the 20 mil floor is, that is still in process of being possibly the veto being overwritten, but I can send that to you, Teresa, I'm sorry, I didn't expect to bring that with me.
You've sent it to me, but at the last board meeting, I asked if it was a million, and why were we still, why did we still put in the paper at 1.6 million? And you guys said you were gonna look at it as because it was estimates, and just didn't know if you guys had had a chance to look at that or not.
I have not. Next meeting is gonna be the five-year forecast will be presented, which is October 6th, I believe is the date, so I'll definitely by then go into detail in that.
Okay.
You know, as far as the state funding and so forth.
Okay. Also, in your agenda, I'm referring to, where is it? The $2,500 allocated for the environmental assessment related to the 1303 renovation project. I was just wondering what that's referring to?
I believe that's a requirement as part of the federal grant for Head Start, is the 1303 project. Is that in the Head Start portion?
Yes.
Yes, that's what that's referring to. I believe that's a requirement that has to be done as part of that process.
And that's over at the, what, Phil, that's the...
But it's currently the middle school, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So, oh, so it's gonna be on the middle school, not the head complex?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. And, Phil, this is a question for you. The front facade on the high school, those two windows that don't, that are not bricked completely, are we putting something in there decorative as to why it is?
Metal panel.
What was that?
They'll have metal panel.
Okay.
That and the entryway have green metal panel, so when they're, they're working their way around, so when they do that, they'll knock out the whole frame.
So it's just green metal, is, I mean, we're not gonna have like a bulldog?
No, no.
A pulp print or something like that?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Michelle, you're up.
So, the first item that I have is to approve the minutes for the August 11th and August 25th meetings. Number two is to approve the cash summary for August, showing revenues of 5.9 million and expenditures of 7.4 million. Number three is to approve the cash reconciliation report for August. The balance is $75,403,433.67. Of that, $42,826,830.94 for the building project. The amounts of checks written for August was $5,278,463.17. And then I'm also asking the board to approve amendments to the FY '26 temporary appropriations, which is totals $100,700 is the changes, the amount of the changes, an increase to the appropriations. Number six is to accept the donations of $2,000 from Mercer County Civic Foundation to the Salina Boys Basketball Program to purchase a shoot-away basketball shooting machine, and $5,000 from Salina Moose for the CHS Spirit Squad LabRats New York City trip, and then $18,000 grant from the Gene Haas Foundation for the TriStar Engineering and Manufacturing Machine Programs. And that's to purchase equipment. And that is all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
No questions for Michelle? Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Julie, in a second. Was that Carl?
That was John.
Oh, John. Sorry, John.
Oh, that's fine.
Mr. Klaus.
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Aye.
Mrs. Summer.
Aye.
And Mr. Hilsman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gessler, you're up.
Okay. So the first section underneath my report, Section A underneath Personnel, I'm asking the board to approve the Attachment 1 that outlines a lot of different personnel changes, additions, subs. I'm also asking the board to approve the revision of contracts for Chad Sap and for Derek Winning effective this school year to move to continuing contracts. And I'm also asking the board to approve the extension of a probationary period for one of our custodians to October 13th. Do you want me to expound on anything? In detail?
We're good.
Good? Okay, so I'll pause there.
I'll move to approve. I'll second. All right, Mark, and then Carl.
Mr. Klaus.
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Aye.
Mrs. Summer.
Aye.
And Mr. Hilsman.
Aye.
For the next section, Section B, I'm asking the board to approve stipends to cover our first Lego League advisors. This is paid out of federal grant money, it's Title IV, it's for student enrichment and academic support. I'm also asking the board to approve stipend payments of $30 an hour for staff members to serve on their building leadership teams in each respective building, and that is for the '25, '26 school year. Just to clarify, these folks do not receive any compensation in addition to this. So we have staff members who receive supplemental contracts for grade level chair, for team lead, and for department head in the different buildings, and so that responsibility for the building leadership team, that expectation is embedded within that supplemental. These folks do not have those, like, supplementals, so that is their compensation. And again, that's for this school year, for the monthly meetings.
At 30 bucks now, I'm assuming this is after school hours?
It is, yes. And meetings typically do not go beyond two hours.
And how many meetings a year is there?
So once a month.
Okay.
And so that is through the month of May.
Any, any questions? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
John, a second.
I'll second.
Mark?
Mr. Klaus.
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Aye.
Mrs. Summer.
Aye.
And Mr. Hilsman.
Aye.
For the next section, Section C for Other Business, I'm asking the board to approve a couple overnight trips there. One for our trip for our kiddos to New York City, another one for our eighth grade DC trip, that's an annual trip our kiddos take. Also to approve $30 an hour, or, beg your pardon, per class for Renee Williams and Sarah Young as instructors for weightlifting classes, and this is funded out of the Wellness Fund. And then to approve the revision for the highlighted gifted services portion of our district's Gifted Education Identification Policy and Service Plan.
Any questions, guys? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Carl, in a second.
I'll second.
Julie?
Mr. Klaus.
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Aye.
Mrs. Summer.
Aye.
And Mr. Hilsman.
Aye.
For Section D, Head Start, I'm asking the board to approve the Head Start Report per the attached. Also to approve the budget revision reflecting $2,500 be reallocated from the fringe budget category to the other budget category, given the explanation there for unspent funds. Please?
Yeah, separate resolutions.
Oh, I beg your pardon, sorry, I got excited.
Okay. For the Head Start Report, can I get a motion, please?
Sure.
Carl, what was that?
Carl and Julie.
Julie.
Mr. Klaus.
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Aye.
Mrs. Summer.
Aye.
And Mr. Hilsman.
Aye.
Now for the next part, under Head Start. Again, that's to approve a budget revision.
Okay. Is there another motion?
Is that the school's budget or Head Start?
No, that's a Head Start.
So those are all federal funds in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Federal grant.
I'll move, we approve it.
Mark, second.
I'll second.
Carl?
Mr. Klaus.
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Aye.
Mrs. Summer.
Aye.
And Mr. Hilsman.
Aye.
And for the last part, Section E for TriStar, I'm asking the board to approve several TriStar Student Competition Overnight Stays for FCCLA, Skills USA, BPA, and HOSA.
Do you happen to know what HOSA is? I know all of them, but you know what I'm gonna say, right?
I knew I should've been prepared for that! No, I don't!
I don't either, and, you know, I should, but I don't.
High Schools of Ohio.
I do, okay, that's all right.
And I will have to follow up with that.
How many kids go to each one of these? Brooke?
Oh, gosh, I'm not sure, Adam. I think the state competition, I think they try to usually, we have a bigger crowd there, and if they qualify there, then they can go on to the national competition.
State competitions are usually like one for each TriStar program, like Skills USA, that's the one I'm familiar with. Carl was a competitor in that, as well as I. But you gotta get one, one from each program to state, but then for national, it's gonna be knocked down to a few.
Gotcha.
So HOSA stands for Health Occupation Students of America.
Okay. They used to, they used to be in Skills.
So it'd be the med...
So they split off.
Yes.
Okay.
I did not recall that one from last year.
I've never seen it before.
Maybe they renamed themselves.
Okay.
I used to be in charge of it.
And maybe they didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions about this? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
John, in a second.
I'll second.
Carl?
Mr. Klaus.
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Aye.
Mrs. Summer.
Aye.
And Mr. Hilsman.
Aye.
Okay. If we don't have anything else, we're going to move into executive session. Can I get a motion to who?
I'll make a motion.
Julie, in a second.
I'll second.
Carl?
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Aye.
Mrs. Summer.
Aye.
And Mr. Hilsman.
Aye.